Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting for the Lewiston City Council Monday, November 24th. We'll call this meeting to order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business will be the citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the city council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues, advance with the city manager, and in consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit remarks to three minutes. Do we have any citizen comments tonight? Mr. Lowman, name and address for the record, please.
3810 Country Club, Lewis, Idaho. I'd like to get down here.
Thank you.
Morgan Lowman.
Morgan Lowman, can you hear me?
Yep.
3810 Country Club, Lewis, Idaho. Sorry for short notice, and I wasn't able to contact any managers about this meeting, but I'd like to introduce myself and thank you for the three minutes I have. My name is Morgan Lowman, I'm owner of Lowman Helicopter, based here in the Lewis-Clark Valley. I have something I want to hand you guys out real quick. I can. You can go longer than three minutes, but not much. Earlier this spring, we purchased a hangar at the Lewiston Airport. Spent quite a few months working with the airport, Federal Aviation Administration, Airport Building Authority, to develop the property and use it for commercial use, for service station to maintain aircraft and to base our helicopters there as well. Pass that around, should the pink hangar is our vicinity, I didn't make photographs of those, just share those. So after months of working with the Airport Authority Board and Federal Aviation, we were blessed to expand our hangar to accommodate the services we wanted to provide to general aviation community. We signed a new lease with the Airport Authority Board on or about June this year. It's a commercial lease, commercial lease rate, we carry commercial insurance limits. Approximately two weeks ago, the new airport manager told us we had to cease operations of landing aircraft. This isn't working.
Yeah, we need to just keep it laying out.
Approximately two weeks ago, we were told we had to stop landing at the hangar. We are not violating any Federal Aviation Regulation rules, we are not, we're fully in compliance with the airport minimum standards and our lease. The Airport Authority Board voted a couple nights ago to make a cease and desist landing at our hangar. The main reason is basically we just don't fit in. Anyhow, if we're forced to stop landing, it's going to be detrimental to our business. The reason why I gave you that photo is that's a 30,000 square foot facility we would like to develop on the south side, but we can't work with the airport on small issues, we're certainly not going to invest several million dollars on a big issue. We generate literally millions of dollars each year, tax revenue to the city, state of Idaho, have over a dozen employees, and I'm just having some issues here and just want to make you guys aware of that. So, it's my understanding the airport was supposed to promote business, not hinder it. This is a legal description of where we're at, I only have one copy of that, if you guys want to hang on to that, you can look at that. So, anyways, we're completely playing by the rules. If you have any questions.
Mr. Blakey.
If defenses can't be mended, sir, do you have an option to take your business somewhere else?
Right, yes. We invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in this, though, so it's...
Where would you take your business?
To the county.
You relocate in the county.
With this building, we're going to use local contractors from HVAC, legislation, to build our guys. The Prodigal Loans are going to generate some good money for some of the local guys in town. We hired two out-of-state pilots this year to move into the valley, these guys are six-figure folks, we're going to buy pickups in town, you know, go shopping in the stores, so it's here to stay, create jobs, and generate some cash, and pay our taxes, and we'll move to the county, yeah, that's...
Counselor Daniel.
It's more of a question for Mr. Bennett. This is the first time I've even heard of this, and you're saying that the authority voted on it a couple days ago, so I was going to request that Mr. Bennett, if you could maybe look into it for us and get us a kind of a report of what's transpired.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
What's changed between how you're operating your business now and how you were operating it before? Obviously, something must have happened to, so that the airport board would make some kind of a change in the way they've been treating you currently.
We were never at the airport before, we moved up there, and everyone understood that we would sometimes taxi aircraft, tow them, and fly them in. The truth of the matter is, is the neighbors, the old boys who've been there for a while, just don't like somebody new on the block. What irritates me more than anything is there's buildings on that airport that are full of cars, raceboats, not aircraft. We carry the right insurance, we pay the premium prices, I mean, we're doing everything above board, and this other stuff is just, it's not even being addressed.
They don't like the rotorcraft where the airplanes are at.
It's just, right where our property lies, for people to exit the airport, it makes it much easier for the guys in their cars driving out, it makes them drive all the way across our leasehold, lines them up to the gate easier. It's really, by us being there, it makes their exiting the airport a little bit more difficult. We had some property stolen last week, from behind the locked gate, from somebody in the neighborhood, so it's, hasn't been a very good situation, and making us, keeping us from landing's been more of a priority than finding out who's stealing our stuff.
So, was there a particular reason given, or just they felt you weren't in compliance, or?
It's windy, it's dusty.
Rotor wash.
Rotor wash, the, one of the reasons Mr. McLaughlin Airport Manager gave was the, we take Gate 29, everybody's familiar with the old storage sheds that do the whoop-de-whoop, so when we depart, O'Connor Road, we'll take off that direction, or we'll do a high hover taxi over to the runways, so.
Okay, yes.
Is there not already helicopter service there? Are you competing with somebody? Are you, you've been there for a long time, correct?
No, 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 just, we just started flying out of there a couple months ago. Lifelight is in the vicinity, but we don't compete against each other.
And there has been no other helicopter service out of there besides Lifelight?
There's a flight school that's based in the area, they happen to trailer their aircraft in and out, but we were told we had to leave to get tugs and, or carts, to relocate our aircraft, and these maps I've given are other areas where aircraft or a helicopter can take off and depart. They're, first of all, they said we couldn't land there anymore, didn't say where we could land, though, just said not there. So, the areas I indicated on these maps are known areas where helicopters can't take off and go, but if we're picking up folks from the fishing game, or somebody from Avista, we can't take them out in that area, we're literally, we're taking members of the public pass where Delta Airlines comes in, in Alaska. The air traffic out front, where we might have to, or are supposed to go, is, has a lot of volume, a lot of risk. The helicopter blades are up here, making wind, and they're saying that they're more dangerous here than a twin-turbo prop and airplane down low. As, I mean, we can't walk into helicopter blades, like, so the risk thing where we're at is really the lowest aircraft traffic. If we were made to move to one of those areas I depicted, a lot more opportunity for risk out there.
So, so the decision, the decision, I guess a couple questions. One is, your decision not to let you go there is not a safety issue?
They're claiming it, or to cease operations where we're at, they're saying is safety.
It's a violation of some FAA rules?
No. Airport control tower has no authority there, it's a non-movement area. The FAA comes to our place and suspects, we're not violating any Federal Aviation rules, we're not violating the traffic, the control tower. That's why, of course, I guess unless you fly, you would know this, but as a pilot, when you say, hey, I'm direct to the Lowman Hangar, they always say, land at your own risk, you're cleared to your hangar, land at your own risk, so anytime you're in a non-movement area, and off, the airport tower always says, land at your own risk, that's how they, that's the legal word you got to use.
Counselor Randall.
The city and the county both entered into an agreement that the airport authority would be the one controlling the airport, managing it for the city and the county, and I don't think it's appropriate for us to even be questioning the airport authority, it's their job to take care of the airport, and they're the ones that set the rules and regulations, and it's for us to let them handle it, not to override them. If we override them, then their situation may be, why bother even being the authority? So, I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't think we should even be discussing this.
If I may, the gentleman brings up a good point, and I'm not looking at overriding anybody at this point in time, but I think it would be prudent for us to have Mr. Bennett communicate with the Joint Airport Authority...
That part I don't have a problem with.
...to find out what the real issues are, because Mr. Morgan does have a fair number of aircraft, and, you know, if he's going to be wanting to build out there, obviously that's not going to happen overnight on the south side, and he needs a place to operate his business, and if he's put out of business, then we're the lesser for it. The airport is, the city is.
I think it'd be, after Jim talks to the airport authority, I think maybe we could ask them to reconsider and go from that point.
I have a problem hearing you with the mic.
Oh, me?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'd like to be there as short amount of time as possible, but like you said, we do need to generate revenue somewhere. We spend a lot of money to be there.
Yes.
What is, what is the appeals process when the Airport Authority Board makes a decision? Is there one?
That part, I don't know, I mean, I was with the council when we created the Joint Airport Authority, and, to be honest with you, sir, I don't have an answer to that, and I don't know if Mr. Bennett has an answer to that either.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question either. We'd have to go back and look at the agreement between the county and the city and the Airport Authority, but I would tend to agree with Mr. Counselor Randall, I don't think we have any authority whatsoever.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, they may have some recourse in court, petition for judicial review of an administrative decision or something like that, but I'm not aware of any appeal directly to the city council or the county commission.
Counselor Daniel.
Still, it's a, it's a local business, we should at least, you know, he's here at the city council meeting, talking about property we own, I mean, I think we owe it to them to, at least do our due diligence, at least find out what's going on, and that's why I suggested having Mr. Bennett.
No, certainly. General, see, our lease says, we have permission to conduct commercial operations, we specifically want to do a repair station, which means you've got to fly aircraft in and out. I can't buy a tug for a dozen different aircraft, I mean, it's in the lease, I'm just like, if you don't want us to land there, you should have put it in the lease, not even an iota of breath murmured about not landing there. Had we couldn't land there, we would not have bought the building, we have not spent a year trying to make it all happen. I mean, we're close to half a million bucks into this thing, so it's not just going to roll over here.
Well, I...
Anyhow, I just want to make you all aware of it.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm going to make an assumption that, besides talking to us, did you take the time to visit at the county meeting today and make your same presentation there?
No, I, no, sir.
Make that recommendation, and two, I also assume you probably have hired legal representation here.
Yes.
I have, yeah. Mr. Lowman, I appreciate you coming here and bringing us aware of this. We'll have the city manager in contact with the Joint Airport Authority and see if we can't find out something, but at this point, since we did see operations to the Joint Airport Authority, we're the landowner.
Right.
We're not the business manager.
But you're, and you're...
But, we, and I'm not trying to blow you off at all, it's just I think it might take a few days to start some conversations, how's that?
We asked Mr. McLaughlin to reconsider, the night of the meeting, they said, how much time do you need to buy a tug? Well, I didn't know, but what, they're, by the way, these towing devices are anywhere from 10,000 to 20,000 apiece. So I said, oh, on home, maybe 10 days. Well, I immediately got a quote the next day, and they're 30-plus days, and they're anywhere from, like you said, 10-plus thousand dollars, so, the day 10's going to roll around, they want us to stop flying. If I ordered a tug yesterday, I'm not going to see one until after Christmas, I can't move the aircraft out there, so, so we asked Mr. McLaughlin to reconsider, and he still said, no, you're done the 10th, and we told him we can't get a tug for more than 30 days, we told him the costs, we also asked him if we could be involved with what he's calling his investigation with the FAA on the legality of this, so, there's two sides to be heard, but he dug his heels in, we did not, didn't get an extension. So, what if he rules in six months that we can legally land there? What am I supposed to with $30,000 or $40,000 in tugs I don't want? I mean, does the Airport Authority Board want to buy them back from me? I don't need them, so we're not getting no joy from the airport manager. Anyhow, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
You bet.
So, I'll contact the Airport Authority tomorrow and try and get some more background information for all of you on...
Please keep us in touch.
And let you know what the situation is, and we'll...
Okay.
Take it from there.
When's the next JA meeting, Counselor Randall, or do you know?
I'm not sure, because they set them at each meeting, so...
Hopefully next month.
Maybe Jackie knows, because she was there.
Do we have any other citizen comments? Ms. Grayback, name and address for the record, please.
Danz Grayback, 512 24th Street North, Lewiston, Idaho, and I'm a member of Friends of the Airport. What you just heard is totally out of context here. Commissioner Randall is absolutely right. There are two members of the Airport Authority that this body has appointed to that board, as did the county appoint, too. The four of them appointed the fifth. Now, you have instructed them, through the joint powers agreement, to run the airport, and at that point, you all should not even be involved. If there's a lawsuit coming, certainly you would be made aware of it, but there, it's in the exploration area at this point. I sat in a meeting, and there are others in this room that sat in a meeting, that said there would not be any takeoff and landing in front of the Peterson Hangar that Lowman now occupies, and Odenada also has a helicopter facility at the airport. They take a tug and take their machines out from their hangar area to start them up and land them, and while we were in the meeting, Mrs. Lowman said that they would do the same thing. Now, that was denied at the last Airport Authority meeting. You know, like I say, it's, this isn't your business at this point, it belongs at the airport. Let them do their job.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Any other citizen comments this evening?
Mike Lorenz, 458 Creston Circle Drive. Oh, I just want to make a few comments on a couple of subjects, now that we're done and over with with our ordinance, and now I think it's time for you guys to step up and kind of deal with some stuff that probably would benefit the majority of the taxpayers and not the minority. So hopefully next year, after the holidays are over, you guys will take care of looking into some of our city expenditures, especially our $200 cow allowance we pay to people who drive to work, our cell phone usage, I know we got a contract on it, but I don't think 139 employees in the city of Lewiston need a cell phone, you pay them a stipend or whatever, like I said, you guys are the stewards of the taxpayers' money. Couple other things, I think next year, you really need to delve into why, you know, we have no mutual aid to Clarkson, we have no mutual aid with Potlatch, you know, the biggest employer in the city across the river, and it was all politics, it was personality issues more than anything. So anyway, I think that's something you guys need to step up to the plate and deal with, instead of dancing around with all these, as far as I'm concerned, insignificant issues. I got some, I got a handout here, I'll give you. So anyway, that, this handout is definitely dated, but it is still part of the reason why there is no mutual aid with the city of Clarkson, it was just all about, you know, poor sports and not getting their way, and I think it's time for you as a council to step up and pretty much start telling the employees what they're going to do, instead of employees telling us what they're going to do. So hopefully next year, you will take some of this stuff to heart and step up to the plate and kind of take care of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Colby Ford, 1041 Hamlock Ave, Lewiston, Idaho. I want to be very brief. As before, we've discussed the measure basically outlining the state's law on discharging a firearm within the city limits. It sits before you, I'm kind of here just to answer any questions if there is any of the city council or the mayor at this time, or any of the citizens.
Do they have any questions?
Thank you, gentlemen, for your time. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
You bet. Thank you. You have any other citizen comments this evening? Okay, well, seeing none. Moving on to our next items, presentations, and this presentation of a plaque to Doug Black for 12 years of volunteer service on the Solid Waste Advisory Commission. Fortunately, we don't have the plaque, but we do have Mr. Black here. Would you please come down, sir?
Mr. Johnson, would you like to say, or...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Yes, it certainly is an honor to recognize Mr. Doug Black tonight for his years of service to the Solid Waste Advisory Commission, and also other activities that he's been involved with through the city. I can tell you that he's been a very valued partner for the council and for the Solid Waste Division. He helped lead the efforts in our single-stream efforts and our global contracting we went through about seven years ago now, and, you know, the input we get from our citizens, from the advisory groups, is very valuable, and it's very much welcomed, and it helps us make better decisions, so I just thank you and the council for having these commissions, and then for Mr. Black for his years of service to the commission, to the city. Doug?
Waste management is, I thought when I got on the committee, about 12 years, they all included sewers, but it didn't. But anyhow, it's a learning experience, and filling seats on the advisor commission has, committee has always been an effort. We have seven positions available. Mr. Randall is our director, our lead-in for the city council at large, and that helps a great deal make a successful program. But the waste management program is a collaborated effort between the folks that work for the city, the contractor, Sunshine Disposal, the, the, other things that all fit together make the thing work. It isn't just attending 12 years of meetings, but I appreciate your recognition of this.
You bet. Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anybody that wishes to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Vouchers, please, payable, if I could have those moved over to the active.
Okay. Item C will become item C in the active, okay?
Can we move item A in the consent to the active?
Item A?
Yeah.
Okay, so that council minutes will be now active, and then D. I have a motion to read the consent agenda as amended.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Accepting the minutes of the November 5th, 2014 Transportation Advisory Commission.
Consent agenda's been read, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Moving on to the active agenda. Potential third reading and adoption of ordinance 4616, which is amending city code section 31-85 and print D, providing for the naming of streets by resolution. I'll entertain a motion to read ordinance 4616 for the third time by title only, suspending the rules.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Accepting the third reading of ordinance 4616 by title only, suspending the rules. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending Lewiston city code, section 31-85D, providing for the naming of streets by resolution and providing an effective date.
Okay, counselors, ordinance 4616's been read for the third time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 4616.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up is potential third reading and adoption of ordinance 4619, amending the city code section 24-1, providing for an exception to discharging firearms if in defense of persons or property. Entertain a motion to read ordinance 4619 for the third time by title only, suspending the rules.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the third reading of ordinance 4619 by title only, suspending the rules. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending Lewiston city code, section 24-1, providing for an exception... for an exception to discharging firearms if in the defense of persons or property, and providing an effective date.
Okay, councilors, ordinance 4619's been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 4619.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Counselor Daniel?
Just, I wanted to thank Mayor Protam Johnson and the Idaho Second Amendment Alliance for bringing this forward.
Yes, and the gentleman, I can't remember his name now, but, uh...
Colby.
Thank you, Colby, for bringing that to our attention, and I think that's a fine correction to the city code, so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, next up will be vouchers payable 10/12, or 10/2414 through 11/614 in the amount of $1,110,385.48. Entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable.
So moved.
Second. Your motion is seconded. Is there a discussion?
Yes.
Counselor Blakey?
Mr. Bennett, I'm going to make, use the word, I'm going to assume here, but I'm looking on page 10 out of 11 at the section for Verizon. And I have in front of me the, I pass around copies of our July vouchers of what we were paying inland at the time. And I noticed that our, this is the first big Verizon bill that we've gotten since we've contracted with them now for bulk service. And our bill totaled up, excluding the library, because that was not in a July bill, was $26,658. I'm going to make the assumption that there's a bunch of front-loaded costs in there that we obviously aren't going to see every, every month after this. But there's a lot of front-ended, front-ended costs, and maybe tonight's not the best night to get the answer, because our Director of Finance isn't here. But is there any comment you might have on that? Is it, is it front-ended right now? There's a bunch of front-end costs for acquisition of phones and/or pads or whatever else?
I don't have a specific list or anything like that, but I believe you're correct, councilors, that there are a number of those which have been associated with the iPads and accessory devices that were, you know, one-time acquisition to go along with the new Verizon program. What I can do is check into that, find out a better breakdown specifically which costs are associated with the one-time costs and which are the actual operational charges for those, and get that information back to you and the council.
Yeah, okay. That's fair, because I said I do have the July, I have the July vouchers, and our bill back then was $3,887 for cellphone service. And it'd be good to see, kind of be able to get a comparison now of what our cellphone service will be with all of the one-times pulled out. And I suppose we'll probably get a better look at that next month when the vouchers, when we get ready to pay the vouchers then.
Yes, I would, I would venture that that is the case, but I will check with Administrative Services Director Marsh when he returns, and I'll have our finance department break that down so we know which charges are associated with equipment that had to be purchased for the initial implementation of the system, and which of it actually refers to the actual charges for the operation of the system.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because before we know it, that six months or so is going to be up, and we talked about putting this back out to RFP, as we would put this possibly back up for bid at a one-year anniversary. So we're going to obviously have to give some leeway and some time before that to get, to get out to the public to let them know that inland has it, can come back and bid this, or anybody else could, too, going down the road. So having those numbers will help us make decisions.
Okay. I can do that. Sir? Mr. Counselor Randall?
Also on the Verizon, next time, maybe we could have Dan let us know what is inclusive of the executive charge, because the executive charge is quite a bit more than the rest of the departments, so maybe he can help break that down for us.
The executive charges include any charges for the city council members. So, for example, iPads potentially that were purchased for city council members, et cetera, would be charged to that account.
Okay. Thank you.
Protam?
What falls under legislative, then?
Well, I don't have the breakdown in front of me, but it just depends on how they're charged.
But the city council would be...
Some of the council charges are charged to executive and some are charged to the legislative, depending on which accounts they're set up under. But I will find that out for you. We can get a breakdown of equipment by department and then break out what the actual cost of the services is for you.
That would be valuable information.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Those in favor of approving vouchers payable, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next item up would be city council minutes. City council meeting minutes, 8:25 regular, 9:22 regular, 11:03 work session, and 11:10 regular. I'll entertain a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. Your motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Randall?
I'm just wondering why we are so late on getting our meeting minutes for August, and then we don't have, also, we don't have any meeting minutes for October. So I was wondering if we've got some missing minutes and, because I know we did something in October. Well, we had that joint meeting, now you know that was one. We also had a work session, also, I'm pretty sure.
I thought the August minutes had gone on a previous meeting agenda. They had not. They're on there now, so that they got proper approval.
Are we caught up on October?
October, there was one meeting.
I think there was two.
One regular meeting for me. So the end...
And one joint meeting.
Right, and it was the end of October.
There is, I think there was one toward the first part and one toward the last.
Might have been a work session.
We had a joint meeting with P&amp;Z.
Yeah, we had a joint meeting.
And we did have one.
So we didn't have a second meeting, second week, because of Columbus Day, so we had the 27th.
Well, we'll go back and review the minutes to find out which minutes, if any, have not yet come before council that need to be approved, so that we're totally caught up with minutes from our previous meetings.
Thank you.
Okay. So getting back to city council meeting minutes, all, all those in favor approving the city council meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, concludes our active agenda. Onto unfinished new business. City council or comments? Do we have any city council or comments tonight? Counselor Blakey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm using my cellphone, because I'm reading a letter that I received from a concerned citizen, and I wanted to make sure I had the dates here and everything. I recently received an email that I did forward to Mr. Bennett. It was from Kelly Carper and his wife, and it was concerning some of the activities of some of the kids from Nitch, or at least one child in particular, who was on their, on his personal property, looking in their kitchen windows at 7:45 that night, and then later committed a crime at 8 o'clock down the street where he was breaking and entering a home and attacked a woman. Anyway, and the letter's quite lengthy, but both Kelly and Carla expressed their concerns about other safety issues that they've had in the neighborhood there, along Carroll Drive, along with kids coming into the back, coming into the backyards of homes there, in some cases, just chasing balls that go over the fence. And sometimes, the perception is the kids are also prowling the backyards, maybe looking around. I live across the street from the park in that same neighborhood, and there have been issues over the years, and I expressed that concern to both, both folks. But I said I would bring that up in the meeting, and again, I did forward the email to Mr. Bennett, and I believe you probably forwarded it on, too.
I did forward that on to the police department. I actually met with Deputy Chief Lanier this morning to discuss this particular situation, and he gave me a really good account of the history of the Northwest Children's Home. You know, it's been in the community for a very long time, perhaps as long as 75 years. And it does provide services to troubled youth in the community and in the Pacific Northwest. And the police department works with the staff at the Northwest Children's Home, you know, on issues involving the kids, and, yes, there are issues. And they are issues that, you know, are probably going to continue in one form or another because of the nature of the business that the Northwest Children's Home is engaged in. But, you know, they are following up, obviously, on this particular case to make sure that everything that needs to be done to protect the safety of the residents in that area and to address the actions by the individual are taken care of.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Just a brief one. I got, also received an email from a concerned business owner. She's just recently opened up a business down on Main Street, and her concern was smoking on the sidewalks. And she has a business out there, and there are people that frequent several businesses down there that have a tendency to stand out on sidewalks and smoke, and is wondering if there was a way we could put some sort of a ban on smoking within, you know, 25 feet. I don't know if that's feasible or not, but I was hoping for her to be here tonight. She had, sounded kind of excited about being here, but maybe we'll, I'll contact her and see if she can't come and talk to us again, see what her ideas are. The other one is, after the last meeting we had right before Veterans Day, I think I said I was invited to go to Juniper Meadows for their Veterans Day celebration and present plaques, and I, believe me, I was honored and humbled to be part of that, seeing these folks, and some of the old guys reminded me of my dad, if he was still here, be the same age as those guys. And they were very appreciative of getting recognized for their service of the country. And it wasn't just World War II vets either. There were some Korean War vets and Vietnam vets in there. And so anyways, Labor Day or Veterans Day, I think, was pretty well promoted in this town, and I'm grateful to the citizens for supporting our vets, so that's all I have. City manager comments? Mr. Bennett?
Well, we will go ahead and note that, for the record, we will be having only one city council meeting in December at this point, unless needed. So that will be on December 8th in two weeks. We will have a work session on December 1st. The focus of that work session will be on the community park. We will have one active agenda item on there that we need to take care of, which is to conduct the public hearing for the 2013 CDPG caper program. And Tanya Arnett from the Community Development Department will be there to make that presentation, but it should be brief. So that will be the next couple of meetings that will take us basically until the first of the year.
Okay. Okay, advisory board and commissioner appointments. I actually have one this evening. Wes McCoy has applied to take over for Josh Wadsworth on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've known Wes for quite some time professionally and socially, and he's been on the Code Board of Appeals. He works for All West Testing. He used to work for the City of Lewiston after he was working for All West. Now he's back with All West, and Wes will be a good example, or a good representative on the, on the P&amp;Z. And I'd like to thank Mr. Wadsworth for his time. Yeah, he's just in a position now where, A, he's a contractor, B, he's got the kids at that age, where there's a lot of social things going on, sports and what have you. So I do thank him for his service, but I would entertain a motion to appoint Wes McCoy to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second. Your motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 12 to 7. Seven to zero. Sorry. Looking at something else here. Any other advisory board and commission appointments? Counselor Collins?
Mr. Mayor, we have two appointments we'd like to make this evening with motions for Historic Preservation Commission, the first of which is Gary Bush. I'd like to move that he be appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second. Your motion's been made and seconded for Gary Bush to be appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
And then we have a second position I'd like to entertain a motion for as well, for Ann Marie Emerson on the same commission.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries seven to zero. Following up on Mr. Black's comments for this evening, and Counselor Randall, still looking for...
Three positions on the Solid Waste.
Three positions now on Solid Waste Commission.
And we'll be coming up with discussions on the landfill, too, so...
Okay.
Be important to get somebody if we can.
You bet. Anybody interested, please contact Kerry. If you put in 12 years on the Solid Waste Advisory Commission, you get a handshake and a plaque. So you got that going for you. Work session agenda topics, are we, any new ones for this evening, or? Nope? Okay. Well, that concludes our business for now. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, RE Personnel, Idaho Code, section 67-2345 and parents 1 and parent B.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Take a four-minute break.
We will read, we can read.
Yeah. Oh. That's been freaking me out, but I think he's been off.